Hello and welcome to this special Retail Now 2021 Town Hall webinar. I'm Jim Roddy, Vice President of Marketing for the Retail Solution Providers Association. Thanks everybody for joining us today. We've had fantastic registration, a record number for this Town Hall meeting, and then we have record attendance as well. Hundreds of folks are on this call today. So really appreciate you joining us. Looking forward to answering your questions. That's going to be the bulk of today's Town Hall. We are super excited for Retail Now 2021, which again is July 25th through 27th at the Gaylord Opera Land in Nashville. Before we get to the meat of the conversation, let's talk about some of the logistics for today's call. So all lines will be muted for the duration. We received a number of questions with registration in advance and we'll address all of those today on today's call. We're also going to give you an opportunity to submit questions during the call. So using your control panel, you can see it pictured on the slide right there. Also, this session is being recorded. And so you as a registrant, as an attendee, will be able to get a copy of this recording for you to share with your team, with any colleagues that you have who want to get up to speed on everything going on with Retail Now 2021. Also, we're going to put together a, not just a recording, but also a summary document of all the questions that we have received in advance. So you can be in the loop on everything going on from a Retail Now standpoint. We also highly recommend that you visit the Retail Now website. That's at go-rspa.org/retailnow. Again, go-rspa.org/retailnow. All right, before we get to your questions, we do have a few presenters who are going to give you overviews of what's going on this year at Retail Now and its members of the RSPA staff. We have John Kirk, the President and CEO. We have Ashley Nagy, Vice President of Sales and Member Services, myself, and then Kathy Meter, the Vice President of Education. Again, we're going to give you a quick overview and then save time for your questions. All right, let's turn it over to John Kirk. John, take it away.
Okay, thank you very much and thanks to the attendees. We've been together for a long time. We stayed together through a very unique situation and we're going to continue to stay together. And I wanted to give you a feel for the lineup today. We're going to cover what makes Retail Now so unique and why it's a can't miss opportunity for you. Ashley Nagy is going to give you some facts and figures and kind of a state of the union with respect to Retail Now and where we are in mid-April here as we look toward a big event that's coming up in 94 days. And Jim's going to cover some great opportunities for networking and what to expect and some of the things we're planning. And we've got a surprise for you with respect to our opportunity to help others as we drive success for Retail Now. And Kathy Meter will give us highlights of the education curriculum that we've got planned for Retail Now. And as Jim mentioned in the opening, we received many questions prior to this event relating to health and safety. So we're going to take some time to go through all those questions. If we run out of time, within 24 hours, you're going to have a document that has all the questions that have been asked by our community with the answers. So you'll have something to refer to after the fact and we'll try to cover as many of those as we can today because that's a real priority for us. So that's where we stand, good lineup today. And you know, we just want to take a step back and recognize the fact that this is the biggest gathering we've had in over a year. And more importantly, we've got a much bigger gathering that we think is going to be an historical Retail Now in 94 days. And we're excited about that. Our goal at the RSPA is always to deliver what's important to every member. And that's how we go every day. That's what we focus on. How can we deliver what's important to our members on a daily basis? Now, one of the things we've done, we've looked at what our members are interested in, our attendees are interested in more often than not. And we've identified five productivity zones. We're going to talk about those productivity zones a bit at the start of this because we really want to put the opportunity at Retail Now this year in context. So we've got members that are interested in expanding their portfolio. So there's a expanding portfolio opportunity zone. It captures the interests of some of our members. Now, many of our members not only just want to expand their portfolio, they want to expand into a new market as they expand that portfolio. So that is a productivity zone. Another productivity zone, we have members that are interested in expanding their distribution. We know that's important as you try to make sure that your story is being told where you want it to be told. We've got members interested in expanding alliances, as in driving powerful integration that ignites success. Think about a vendor that is looking to add to their solution set and are looking for an innovative solution. They round out what they do. Or that innovative company that's brought a new solution to the marketplace. Boy, those alliances can send the trajectory of the business forward faster than ever and they're critical. So we've got a productivity zone around expanding alliances. We have members interested in expanding education and the development of their team. So we've got an opportunity or a productivity zone there because we know that team development is important and it's very difficult to do. We've also, and you think about our mission of connections, we accelerate your success through knowledge and connections. We've got a productivity zone that's all about expanding opportunities to coach and to be coached, mentor and be mentored. And that's one of the powerful aspects of the RSPA. And Retail Now is a powerful marketplace that fuels the success of our members in the marketplace that you march in every day. So I want to camp out on just a couple of those productivity zones. And I want to kind of draw a line of distinction, what those productivity zones are like without the RSPA and what are they with the RSPA? Because we've got the best and brightest players in the retail space. And when you come to Retail Now, you're working in a high-powered productivity zone. So let's just take a couple of these to draw the distinction. And let's start with trying to expand your portfolio without an event like Retail Now. And let's look at some of the realities associated with it. Well, first off, you've got to pick the right solution because a false step can be costly. If I'm looking to expand a portfolio and I end up with fidelity issues with respect to the solution, what does that do to my brand? What does that do to the time involved? What does that do to the investment that we make as we onboard a new solution? It's not a flip of a switch. What happens when the financial model doesn't pan out to what you hoped it would be or thought it would be? And what about the support? What if you're not getting the support in a methodical way to drive success? The time to launch and the time that it takes to find out maybe you're in the wrong place puts you in a terrible position because now you've got the reality of starting over and you've got the reality of the competition that has been busy while you've gone down the wrong road. That's without the RSPA. When we say expand a portfolio, which we know is a high-powered productivity zone opportunity for our members, if you can't get it done and if it takes you a year to find out what you could have accomplished in a quarter, that's a costly mistake. Let's look at another dimension of the business, expanding distribution. And if I'm a vendor that's interested in finding the best and brightest, I want to expand my distribution. I want to make sure people are hearing my story. What happens when you pick a seller that doesn't cover the market, doesn't hire salespeople? Maybe they don't service your customers the way you envisioned. The cost of a dormant territory is significant and the cost of the false step because of the time to execute is significant. When you go to Retail Now, you're exposed to the best and the brightest. And let's camp out in one more productivity zone and talk about what it's like without the RSPA. And let's talk about the productivity zone of education. Many of our members do not have the size and scope and infrastructure to carry the education weight as it relates to team development on their own. And think about the cost of not training in cybersecurity, not training in workplace conduct, not training in sales and sales management, not training in service. The cost of not doing it is significant. With the RSPA, you have a legitimate opportunity to train for pennies on the dollar. And when you come to the Retail Now event, it's a coach's clinic, it's a player's clinic. The fact of the matter is you're going to, inside a very narrow time window, you're going to pick up information, you're going to accelerate your position on something that's really important to you within hours and you're going to take it home with you. And we are set to do that for you at Retail Now. We also have a big event on May 1 where we'll be releasing our Accelerate Learning Tool. And Kathy will talk a little bit about that later on in the call. But the fact is, we can accelerate your success in all these productivity zones, whether you're trying to expand your portfolio, expand your distribution, find that right alliance, drive the education your team needs for staff development and mentor and be mentored, coach and be coached. We're going to be able to accelerate that success and that progress for pennies on the dollar. You know, we had talked to one of our members recently and they told a story. And the story is pretty basic. They shared the fact that they had gone to one of our events and prior to the event, they were very intentional about planning how they were going to connect with who they wanted to connect with. And about a year and a half after that event, and they made the connections at that event and started to foster and plant the seeds of a relationship, the business that they wanted to connect with became their number one seller about a year and a half after the fact. And that is one story, but it really drives home and accents what the RSPA is all about and what an event like Retail Now is all about. And when you think about what we've all come out of and are still in and working through, there's probably not been a more important Retail Now to participate in. So we're excited about this. We think that we are exactly where we need to be. We are exactly where we need to be. It's our opportunity to lead and we feel like our members and our future members are ready to gather again and attack these productivity zones like no other association and no other community can. Now, along those lines, I want to turn it over to Ashley Nagy. And Ashley Nagy, who is our Vice President of Sales and Member Services, is going to give you a good feel for some of the key moving parts related to Retail Now, where we are on April 21st as we are 94 days in front of the event right now. And I will just give you a little bit of a highlight of what you're going to hear. It's big momentum, a lot of encouraging signs. And this call in and of itself, it's the biggest gathering we've had in over a year. And by the way, it's the biggest Town Hall we've ever had remotely in the history of the association. And I believe it's a bit of a proxy for just how engaged this community is and how big this opportunity is that's brewing that will take place in Nashville. So we're excited about it. We can't thank you enough for participating in the call. And with that, I'm going to turn it over to Ashley Nagy. Thank you very much.
Thanks, John. Hi, everyone. As John mentioned, we are really excited about the momentum as we head down that road to Nashville. So I'm excited to share some updates as it relates to... We'll start first with our registration progress because that's a popular question that we've been getting a lot lately. And we are super excited about the results so far. So you know, as we take a look at where we were at this time in 2018 and 2019, we are pleased to announce that we are ahead of pace. We continue to build that momentum each week. And one of the things I wanted to spend a little bit of time talking about here is the survey trend, right? So I have the privilege, as does the rest of our team, of talking to our members every day, as well as new members that have hopped onboard. And hopefully, some of those folks are with us today for this call. But one of the things that we have been doing quite a bit actually, and we started around the first part of February, it's an informal survey, right? So as we're talking to people, you know, we're always interested in helping them, but also, you know, trying to get a feel for how are people feeling about travel? Are they ready to get back out? Are they excited about Retail Now? And I'll be honest with you, when we started making those calls early in February, it was a lot of, yeah, you know, I want to go, but you know, gosh, what if I don't get my vaccine? Or I've got to kind of weigh my options, call me back as we get closer. And boy, have those calls turned around. And so many of you have reached either back out to say, hey, I am back onboard, I am slated for my vaccine, I've gotten it. Or you know what, I am ready to sign up. And we have seen that progress in our registration. So we are really excited about the momentum that continues and the progress there as well. And with 94 days to go, we will all be together again soon. So let's take a look now at the show floor progress and kind of where we are because that's always a big part of what we do at Retail Now. There's so much excitement and good things that happen that, you know, we thought we'd spend a little bit on the show floor here. So one thing that I'll share is, you know, in terms of booth sales, I get a lot of questions about that. We are north of 100 booths that have been sold already. And having done this for the past six years now with RSPA, that is right on track with where we would normally be at this point in the year as well. And I just booked another booth this morning and I have another call this afternoon. So folks are gearing up to get out, which is always a positive signal. And just as much as our vendors want to get out in front of our resellers and our ISVs, they too want to come and see you as well. Couple of things that we've done around the show floor is we've expanded the show floor hours because by the time we get to Retail Now, it will have been 18-plus months since we were all together. And we want to make sure that you have that time together. So you know, for many of you that have attended in the past, we usually kick off a Sunday evening with the welcome reception. And this year, we're going to do that welcome reception, but we're going to welcome everybody on the show floor for those exhibit hall hours. And then we're also going to have everybody together on Monday and Tuesday for exhibit hall time as well. And Kathy's going to dive a little bit deeper into the overall agenda. But we want you to feel good about the opportunity to, you know, as John said, as you're expanding your distribution or you are looking to expand your portfolio, you have to be able to get out and see those new solutions. And starting to have a lot of conversations with our vendors too, that, you know, maybe we're not quite ready to hop onboard for exhibiting, but you know, they're gearing up and they too are ready. And lots of shows and events are starting to happen again. So a sure positive signal there. Now, as it relates to moving forward, I'd like to share with you, you know, an update as it relates to sponsorship and the growth there. So when it comes to sponsorship, you know, we have our annual sponsorships and we have our Retail Now sponsorship. And we have some that overlap between the two. And this year has been incredible. So a huge thank you to our sponsors. We have more sponsors than we have had in the past few years. So that is a great trend. They are here to support our community. They want to get involved, they want to get engaged, and they want to partner. So thank you again to all of our sponsors that you see here. And you know, really looking forward to, again, seeing everybody there and getting together. So I'm going to turn it over to Jim now and he's going to share with you a little bit about networking at the event.
Great, thank you, Ashley. And thanks for the update on the progress. Those numbers certainly have been moving forward in the right direction. Super excited to see that. So going to talk about networking for a little bit here today. And so folks who are familiar with Retail Now, they know that it's known, it's been known for years, as where the industry meets. And that's for a reason. It's the best place for networking in the retail IT channel. And this year, because we're back again, it's still where, it's where the industry still meets in these difficult times. And so we're having some prime networking opportunities this year and we wanted to share some of those with you. The first is several RSPA communities are going to hold their networking gatherings during the show. So we have some new communities that have started since the last time we got together, 2019 in San Antonio. We have the RSP niche and startup ISV community and then also the cannabis community. So it'll be the first in-person networking opportunity for those groups since they started. And those have quickly become our largest communities inside of the association. We have 65 executives who are part of the ISV community and almost, and I guess it would be if I do my math right, more than double that in the cannabis community. We have 133 as of today. So two huge communities for us. Also, our traditional communities are going to do something that's really interesting. They're going to all come together for one event. So Kathy Meter is going to detail that in the education portion. But just in general, there's going to be a workshop and networking event that's hosted by WNET. That's the Women's Network and Electronic Transactions Group that the RSPA has been working with. We're going to bring together the W to W group, Next Gen, and then the Canadian communities for, like I said, that workshop and networking event. We're also going to continue to have social gatherings. And so as Ashley mentioned earlier, the welcome reception is going to kick off Sunday night on, like it traditionally does. What's going to be different is that first look inside the expo hall. We're also going to have opportunities over breakfast and lunch, Monday and Tuesday, for folks to get together. And then refreshment breaks in between the education sessions. Those are a great time to meet fellow attendees. So my guidance has always been, the education sessions aren't just for VARs, they aren't just for ISVs, they're for everybody in this community. Great opportunity to connect with other individuals there. Plus, as you know, by tradition, many sponsors are going to host evening receptions during the show as well. Also this year, we're going to have show floor meeting rooms. And so those are a convenient way to conduct private meetings and product demonstrations. So also commonly known as whisper suites. So you have a table and chairs and a 10 by 10 panned wall space. And there's also going to be a locking door. There's also access to food, refreshments, and power. And this is going to be important because there, you know, you can meet at your booth during RSPA or during Retail Now while the exhibit hall is open. But you cannot meet during a suite or have meetings off of the show floor during the expo hours. That's an important new guideline that we're putting in this year to really help those folks who are investing in the show floor protect their investment. So again, you can meet people at your booth or you can rent one of these show floor meeting rooms, AKA whisper suites, for you to conduct business with. Also, we're going to have onsite conference rooms that are available for partner meetings and receptions. And so as everybody knows, travel was so limited in 2020 and 2021, this is really the perfect year for vendors to host their annual partner conference or a dealer meeting or reception at Retail Now. And they can do it for far less than what they would pay hosting it somewhere else. So you can reserve a meeting space and conduct a function of your own outside of the Retail Now scheduled activities. If you're sponsoring that room, you'll receive significant discounts on AV, internet, and food and beverage. And so all these show floor meeting rooms, the rooms for the partners and the hotel rooms are, they're very limited. And we're having, again, discounted rates. So make sure you reserve early. You can contact Ashley through membership@gorspa.org so you don't miss out on these great opportunities. And the last word on networking, it comes from RSPA VAR member Kevin McGrath of Value Systems in Myrtle Beach. Kevin says, "RSPA networking is invaluable." So that's a quick overview of the networking at Retail Now this year. And next, what we're going to talk about is the new thing that we're doing this year, the community give back. So as folks know, our association has a history of supporting local charities through the RSPA's Community Give Back Program. We conduct that in person at our in-person event. So in the past, we've built bikes for needy kids in South Florida. We've filled backpacks with food for kids in San Antonio. So Retail Now 2021 is in Nashville. And that's a community that's been affected not only by the COVID crisis, but recently by a flood and by tornadoes. And so this year, Retail Now attendees are going to raise funds for the Nashville Rescue Mission. And so that's a nonprofit that's committed to helping the hungry, homeless, and hurting by providing programs and services that focus on a person's entire life. So physical, mental, spiritual, emotional, and social. So we're going to raise money for the Nashville Rescue Mission over the next three weeks. And here's how we're going to do it. For every 100 individuals who register for Retail Now between now and May 12, the RSPA is going to donate $1,000 to the Nashville Rescue Mission. So if 300 people register between now and May 12, Nashville Rescue Mission is going to get $3,000. If 1,000 people register for Retail Now, we'll make a $10,000 donation. If we get 2,000 people who can register between now and May 12, the Nashville Rescue Mission would receive a $20,000 donation from the RSPA community. I mean, that would be absolutely fantastic if we can do that. So again, the entire RSPA staff is already registered for the event. So now is the time for you to do your part to help your business, to provide, and also to provide a hand to folks who need it in Nashville. So open up a new tab on your browser right now and register for Retail Now 2021. If you haven't already, just go to gorspa.org/retailnow. And that's how you're going to be able to get there. And so why would you wait to register, right? You're going to receive the early bird discount and at the same time, help a great cause like the Nashville Rescue Mission. And so we're going to keep our members posted on how much we raised between now and May 12. So please stay tuned to that. And as Ashley mentioned, we're already trending ahead for registrations from past Retail Nows with 90-something days to go. So let's keep that momentum going. Let's help a great cause at the same time. And finally, to wrap up our community give back preview here, we want to say special thanks to Blake Gillum and Travis Hare of longtime RSPA member DCR in Nashville. They suggested the Nashville Rescue Mission. They said that's one of their team's favorite local charities. And also thanks to RSPA member Intel, who stepped up to be one of the sponsors for the Retail Now 2021 Community Give Back Program. So thank you, Intel. And thanks to everyone who's going to help the cause when they register before May 12. So again, please register today so you can take advantage of the early bird discount and help the Nashville Rescue Mission. All right, now to talk about education, I'll turn it over to RSPA Vice President of Education, Kathy Meter. Kathy?
Thanks, Jim, and good afternoon, everyone. So while everybody is busy with another window open, browser window open, registering for Retail Now, let me talk to you a little bit about the education. We all know education is a big part of the show. And as in past years, it will continue to be a cornerstone for this year's show. On Monday afternoon, the general session will kick off the education portion of Retail Now. And we'll have featured presentations by John Kirk, our President and CEO, David Gottman, our Board Chairman, and there will be a keynote speaker as well. Stay tuned for more information around our keynote. We will continue to use the foundational tracks to help guide attendees through education session choices. Our breakout will be offered on Monday and Tuesday afternoons. And there will be four breakout sessions, two on Monday and two on Tuesday. Each of those sessions has six classes to choose from. So that's a total of 24 classes to choose from. So there's definitely something for everyone and definitely need to bring more than just one person to ensure that you're covering all of the great education that we'll be offering. Want to take a minute to kind of run down the education tracks and give you some headlines from each of those tracks. For executive education, we have titles such as Best Practices for Implementing EOS in Your Business, as well as Retail VARs as Trusted Advisors. Is it art or science? In the Sales and Marketing Track, we have topics such as Successful Selling in a Post-COVID Market and How Can the Restaurant Revitalization Fund Loans Impact Your Sales This Year? Our Security Track will feature Essential Components of an Incident Response Plan and a session around Zero Trust Security Models. Our Next Gen Track will be featuring Five Things to Know About Cryptocurrency. And as we talk about customer service, we'll be visiting topics like How Supply Chain Issues Are Impacting Customers and Customer Realities in 2021. And new this year, we've created an Emerging Opportunities Track. This year, this track will be focused exclusively on the cannabis vertical. This is a fast-growing vertical and an opportunity for many of our members who are interested. Because of the relevance, we'll offer four sessions focusing solely on cannabis and the cannabis industry. Titles will include What You Need to Know About Cannabis, The Market and the Technology, and Mistakes That VARs Can't Afford to Make in the Cannabis Market. Whether you're looking to explore the opportunity or you're a seasoned technology provider looking to increase your knowledge, Retail Now will offer something for everyone interested in this vertical. And something else new that's happening, on Monday evening, as Jim mentioned, we will be having our community event where all three of our communities, women-to-women, Canadian and Next Gen community, will be gathering together to present a unique education and networking event. The WNET, an association that serves to empower women in the payments industry, will be facilitating a Diversity and Inclusion Workshop entitled Conscious Inclusion for Increased Company Success. This is a very relevant topic that impacts all businesses regardless of size. The workshop facilitators include WNET CEO Wendy Holliday and the Senior Diversity and Inclusion Officer at Global Payments, Gail Burgos. The session will engage everyone in understanding unconscious bias, how it can undermine and hold back your company's success, and what can be done to break patterns and move to conscious inclusion. We will continue to add new sessions to our agenda each week. Look for updates regarding new education sessions and speakers on the Retail Now registration site beginning the week of May 11. on the Retail Now registration site beginning the week of May 3rd. And as it relates to speakers, I wanted to take a quick minute to talk about the call for speakers. The Retail Now 2021 Call for Speakers opened yesterday and will be accepting submissions for the designated topics through next Friday, April 30th. Our approach for selecting speakers for Retail Now is always a two-pronged approach. We want to ensure that our members benefit from the expertise and experience that we know resides within our community. But we also want to benefit from expertise and experience that we may not yet be aware of. So the call for speakers allows us to tap into new member experience and new expertise within existing member organizations in addition to leveraging those experts in the community that we are familiar with. Priority selection for speaking slots will always be given to RSBA members. So if you're interested, please use the link that was in the email, fill out the online speaker submission form and send your content prior to end of day on April 30th. And now I think we are going to move to the Q and A portion of our program. And I believe that Ashley and Jim will be reviewing the questions that came in or that were submitted with the registration. So Ashley and Jim, I'll turn it back over to both of you.
Great, thank you Kathy and thanks for that rundown there. Again, RSBA is always leading the way at Retail Now with education. You can see that's certainly going to be the case again this year. So stay tuned for the full agenda. And as Kathy just referenced, what we did was when you registered for this event, you had the option to submit some questions to us. We received not just a ton of registrants, but a ton of questions. We have a ton of attendees here today. So we're going to dive into the questions that we received. Some of them are duplicates, so we're going to combine the answers to them together. If you have a question as well, please use the question function here. We see a couple have come in already and we will get to those for sure. And so it looks like we have about 25 minutes left that we can dive into these questions. So I've got the list of questions here and Ashley is going to provide us all the details that we need. So Ashley, you ready to rock and roll?
I'm ready.
All right, here we go. First question is, I feel like it's a game show. All right, so for $100, what is the current projected attendance 2019 versus 2019 and 2018 attendance? How many vendors, how many VARs?
Yeah, thanks Jim. So as we touched on a little bit earlier, registration is currently ahead of pace compared to both 2019 and 2018. So we're really excited about that. You know, and as we move closer to the event date, we continue to see that momentum build. We continue to see the registrations come in. The hotel room bookings to date are also a reflection of that. And you know, just the number of folks that are starting to take interest again. And like you said earlier, with the attendance here, so it's been great.
Wonderful, all right. Now a question about virtual. So will there be a virtual component in addition to the in-person event this year?
Yeah, so we do get that question a lot. At this time, we plan to record the breakout and general sessions, which will be available on demand and on Accelerate. I know John mentioned that earlier. That's our new e-learning system that's launched in May 1st. And those are the components that we'll have from a virtual standpoint. Otherwise, everything else for Retail Now is in person as it normally is.
Great, thank you. And our next question that comes in also just popped up like two seconds ago. It's about the mask policy. So what social distancing and mask policies will be in place during the show to ensure it's a safe event?
Yep, so the Gaylord Upperaland Hotel resides in Davidson County. And we will be following the Davidson County Health Department guidelines. The current social distancing is six feet apart. And as things stand today, RSBA will require all attendees to wear masks during the event. We want to have everybody be safe and we want everybody to be able to be at the event and be together again.
Got it, great, thank you. And that's what we've looked at a lot of other events as well. And that's similar what they're also doing in terms of making sure that everybody's comfortable and wearing masks and protecting each other. Question about vaccinations, will RSBA be requiring vaccinations to attend Retail Now 2021?
Great question, no, we will not be requiring a vaccination. And we do consider that to be a personal decision, so we are not mandating anyone to get the vaccine.
Got it, all right, taking a total turn to a different topic, but related to Retail Now. Is there a golf tournament this year? A few years, the RSBA has held a golf tournament sometimes on that Sunday, sometimes like right in the heat in Las Vegas. Ashley, is there a golf tournament this year?
Yes, we have loved the golf tournament over the years. This year, however, in order to keep this the safest event as possible, we will not be hosting the golf tournament. But maybe we can pick that back up, perhaps that'd inspire our next Retail Now.
Got it, fantastic. The other thing is that we're doing a little bit different this year is oftentimes Retail Now would start on a Sunday night and then stretch through into Wednesday afternoon. If you notice on the schedule, we're really compacting it. So start Sunday night and then Monday and Tuesday are full days as well. And there might be some of our partners who are hosting events either on Sunday or on Wednesday in order to have their partner conferences as well. So that's the thing, when you compact the schedule, you can't do everything in there unless you could have like a three-hole golf tournament, which probably wouldn't be a heck of a lot of fun to try to squeeze it in. All right, next question, when do you expect to have a list of exhibitors for Retail Now 2021 and a list of attendees for Retail Now? And I think that question also came in as well here live. So Ashley, what's a list of exhibitors, list of attendees?
Yep, so the exhibitor list is available on the registration site or if you want to email us at membership@gorspa.org, we'll send you over the link to the show floor so you can see where everybody's at, start making your list of folks you want to see. And it does include the complete exhibitor list. Also, in regards to the attendee list, so that's a question that comes up often as well. So we will have the post-show attendee list is available for exhibiting members to be able to purchase. Our platinum sponsors do get access to the pre-show registered attendee list a few weeks out from the event.
Got it, great. And if the URL for Retail Now this year is gorspa.org/retailnow, all one words. If you want to go there now and then go to, you'll be able to see exhibit is one of the tabs that is on there. Just click on that and that's how you're going to get access to see the list of exhibitors. And again, I think Michelle asked this question live as well in terms of will you publish a list of registered attendees? And again, just to clarify, Ashley, we don't publish that from a public standpoint, but it's platinum sponsors and vendors can purchase it, is that correct?
That's correct. And for our members, we've always kept the list protected to some degree so that we don't have a bunch of lists out there floating around. And for folks on the call, I know another big one that comes up often is you'll get outside companies that are willing to sell lists. Those are not our lists because we not share those.
Got it, great, exactly right. Yeah, you'll have people say, we have the inside scoop on Retail Now. They don't, RSBA's.
And they don't have inside rates on hotels either. Come to us for all of those things.
Exactly right. If it's not from at gorspa.org, you probably should ignore it or at least forward it to us and we'll let you know what the deal is. All right, another question back to restrictions, will there be restrictions on collateral?
Not on collateral, but one update that will be new this year. So for health and safety reasons, you know, we want to keep it as clean as possible from a safety standpoint. We will not have a show bag this year. Not to say that you can't bring your own bag or however you want to handle that, but we will not be providing one of those just to keep things, you know, from a sanitation standpoint. And then in terms of collateral in the exhibitor booths, it's at the exhibitor's discretion. So if you want to bring collateral to hand out, that's up to you to handle that portion of it.
Got it, great. Another restriction questions, any restrictions on how many people can be in a booth at one time? Attendees, staff, things like that?
Yeah, so that too is at the discretion of the exhibitor. All will be, you know, everyone will be required to follow the overall venue restrictions at the time of the event. But as it stands today, and we keep seeing positive response from the venue and from Davidson County, it's up to the exhibitors.
Great, another similar question about what's the maximum number of people that will be allowed in the exhibit hall at one time? Are there limits to that, Ashley?
So I did mention that we reference the Davidson County Health Department a lot because that's where the Gaylord Hotel is located. Given the guidelines that currently exist, we would be able to hold our event as if it were scheduled to take place today as we normally would. So we don't have any restrictions to share there.
Got it, great, yes, we will keep tuned to that. But those numbers keep getting bigger and bigger in terms of the number of people who are allowed in a four-wall room at one time. So things are certainly trending in the right direction. Will there be any special flow for attendees walking the floor? I think as everybody on this call is familiar, in a lot of grocery stores or retail establishments, they have in the aisles, you know, only one way. What's the plan for that, Ashley, for the show?
Yeah, so as we continue to follow and monitor those guidelines, you know, I wouldn't be surprised if we might see one-way traffic, but those are things that we continue to update, you know, as things improve and we get closer to the event.
Great, thank you. Is there a drop dead date, that's quotes around drop dead, where a final decision will be made about the event going ahead?
So we are moving forward with the event and Retail Now 2021 will be held as scheduled.
Great, yeah, and that's it again, we're seeing a lot of other events that are happening, even scheduled in late May, right? May, June, July, those are all going ahead. But they've got to go ahead with modifications as we've kind of laid out here in terms of it's not back to normal, but it's certainly not in a spot where you can't have the event. So a lot of these modifications we're talking about, that's what's going to enable us to have a great event. Might be spread out a little bit more, but we're moving forward and all things are looking up. So yeah, I don't know what the opposite of drop dead would be, but either way, that's the spot that we're in, where we are moving forward, looking forward, seeing everybody in Nashville. Question about exhibitor kits, when will exhibitor kits be available?
So those are available now. And everyone who has signed up to exhibit so far should have received the email with the details on that. If you haven't, just shoot me an email at membership@gorspa.org or maybe if it got caught up in spam, I'm happy to get that over to you and make recommendations or help with any of your planning for the show.
Great, we have three more questions that came in at registration. And then we've got a long list that are popping up live. Keep them coming, we'll stay here as long as we can to answer all these questions for you. Nothing more important in the RSBA world than Retail Now 2021. All right, so will RSBA be implementing any promotions to help keep attendees on the show floor and visiting each exhibitor, all exhibitors, things like that? Ashley, what are the promotions?
Yeah, absolutely. As we talked about earlier, that's one of the things that, you know, we want everybody to have a great event all around and certainly on the show floor. So some of the things that we have put into place is we've expanded the show floor hours, beginning with that first look event on Sunday evening. So we're going to have that welcome reception on the show floor. The exhibit hall hours are scheduled for Monday and Tuesday morning to kick off each day. And we will have all meals, the breakfast and lunch will be served in conjunction with the exhibit hall hours. And in addition, each attendee will receive what we're calling a passport to collect stamps as they visit the booths. And the completed passport holders will be eligible for prizes. So similar to other events that we've done and other folks in the industry have done, it's a great way to engage and have folks, you know, visit as many exhibitors and hopefully all of them.
Great, and that was the promotion portion of it. And as I alluded to earlier, there's also that policy that we have about no suitcaseing. And a question came in that said, can you give an example of what you mean about no meetings off the show floor? So during show hours, you cannot pull people off the show floor in order to go have a meeting somewhere else, right? At past, there have been some shows where a vendor rents a conference room or they rent a hotel suite, right? And so instead of exhibiting on the show floor, they're pulling people off and doing the demos there. So you're not allowed to do that because you can kind of see the long-term repercussions of it, right? You're paying the hotels some money to rent a room, but the RSBA Association isn't getting the benefit of it. And then if you're a sponsor of a show floor booth, people are getting pulled off the show floor. They're not being able to bump in and it makes a show less effective. So again, we're working on behalf of our members, we're working on behalf of our exhibitors. And so again, if you want to have a meeting during show floor hours, it's got to be at the booth on the show floor or in one of those whisper suites. Again, if you want to go have breakfast with somebody when the show floor isn't open, before it opens, great. You want to go have dinner with somebody, go have drinks with somebody, by all means, knock yourself out. But when the expo hall is open, we're not going to allow folks to rent their own rooms and pull people off the show floor. So David, you had answered, asked that question live, hopefully that answers it for you. If you do want clarification, feel free to submit another one.
And Jim, I'll just add to that real quick, one other thing. So we have had several reservations come in for Saturday and Sunday before the events kickoff for dealer meetings. So we have a few spaces left. If folks are interested in that, please let us know sooner rather than later. And then also for evening receptions. So those are all great opportunities to do some of those one-on-one meetings that don't interfere with the show floor or the education session.
Fabulous, exactly. We're not one of those shows that opens up at 8:00 AM and closes at 9:00 PM or something like that, right? So there are certain times that you will be able to do that. Plenty of show floor hours with plenty of time outside of it as well. All right, two more questions before we get to the live ones. Will you be allowing vendors to book events onsite outside of the Retail Now schedule such as a dinner or other rooms? I think we might have answered that already, but Ashley, any details to add?
Yeah, so that does continue off of what I just shared. You know, if you're interested in booking an event, let us know. You know, we do have a few spaces left, but it is filling up quickly. Would love to have you have those sessions onsite there at the venue.
Great, will there be limitations and restrictions on social events?
So again, we'll be following those guidelines for Davidson County Health Department and the Gaylord Hotel at the time of the event. We're always working, you know, as I mentioned, we're working with a handful of companies to schedule their networking events currently. The trajectory in Nashville is very strong. We do like to keep everyone up to date through our Safety Spotlight series. You know, it includes messaging. The most recent was from the National Convention and Visitors Corporation highlighting the positive momentum. But in terms of restrictions and social events, you know, things are opening up and there's opportunities there as well.
Great, thank you. And again, to emphasize, you know, I think everybody knows if you're veterans with the RSBA, we love our members. We want to keep them safe, right? And so there are these precautions that were taken and you can find a lot of those details in terms of what we're doing. Follow that URL, gorspa.org/retailnow. And then just click on the safety tab as well, or you can access it through the RSBA homepage as well if you like. Just follow the dropdown in order to do that. All right, Ashley, those are all the questions we had in advance that we were able to prepare for. You ready for us to be put on the hot seat here and try to answer some of these questions?
I'm ready, bring it on, we're excited.
All right, so here we go. The first is from Debbie. She says, hi RSBA rock star team. Deborah, you're very kind, thank you, we appreciate that. You're a rock star as well. Debbie asks, Ashley gave general info on numbers referencing we're ahead of pace. Are you able to share the forecasted number of attendance based on this pace? Thank you Debbie, Ashley, how would you answer that question?
Yeah, so we are really excited about the pace that we're on. You know, and we fully expect to have, you know, be back in that neighborhood of 1,800 to 2,000 attendees. We strongly feel that we are going to be, you know, it's going to be a great opportunity for so many in the industry to get together for that first time. So we are expecting a large turnout for the event.
Yep, and we've got that on our website, we're expecting 2,000 plus attendees, 160 plus show floor exhibitors. That's where we're trending right now, looking forward to it. All righty, next question, will there be additional and available hand washing stations and sanitizing stations on the show floor now? Thank you for that question. Ashley, what info do you have on that?
Yes, absolutely. We will have them dispersed well throughout the show floor. We will have it in any of the gathering areas, the education rooms and then the foyer areas. And of course, the hotel is going to have them all throughout. But our team, you know, John has shared before, we want to, you know, take extra steps to make things even more safe. So we will be having even more hand sanitizing stations at the event. Great question.
And now if you go to the Safety Spotlight page, that was actually the Safety Spotlight that I recorded. I showed the small bottle of hand sanitizer that I carried all the shows with me. I've had for many, many years, maybe forever. Once I started testing my blood, a low white blood cell count. And so I'm always making sure I'm using that hand sanitizer. And the great thing is those are going to be within arm's reach almost at all times at Retail Now this year. So thank you for that question, yeah, definitely, we will be able to do that and keep it safe. Jordan asks, will attendees be expected to submit negative COVID testing results or be required to take a rapid test upon arrival? submit negative COVID testing results or be required to take a rapid test upon arrival?
No, we are not planning to do any COVID testing at the event. So that would not be required at the show or in advance of the show.
Great. Thank you, Jordan, for that question. Are there any PPE requirements? So we all have learned that acronym over the past year, Personal Protection Equipment Requirements, in the booth themselves such as Plexiglas? Ashley?
No, we will not have a requirement for the Plexiglas in the booth. Certainly if that's something that you're interested in, you know, we'd be happy to follow up with our event planner GES. We will have, I believe Plexiglas at the registration area, but we are moving to almost all contactless or as much as possible.
Yeah, you'll have the option when you register that there will be a contactless option as well. But if you do want to go and talk with somebody there, we will have it set up in a safe socially distanced manner, just like a lot of folks are seeing in retail establishments, just like probably a lot of folks on this call have been installing for their customers. So Renee, thank you for that question about PPE requirements. Michelle asks, how many attendees were there in 2018 and 2019? Ashley, do you remember Rick Hall off the top of your head?
I want to say in 2018, we were close to 2,000 and we were close to that in 2019, but may have fell a little bit short of the 2,000. I don't know, John, if you are still on, if you want to add anything to that.
No, no, we were a little bit lighter than that, but it was a great, last time we were in Nashville was a great turnout and we would expect it to be better this year.
Yeah, that's right. For folks who might not be familiar, in 2018 was the first time that Retail Now was in Nashville and that was a tremendous event. So well-attended and that's part of the reason why we went back there and why we're confident we're going to have a strong show this year because we've had great attendance at Retail Now in Nashville at the past. All right. Another, Michelle is asking a question. It's, I don't care about official attendee list, but a pre-show list of companies is needed. Ashley, any details on that? I don't think we've released that either in the past in terms of what companies are attending or what's your take on that? Or do you want to try to reach Michelle one-on-one?
Yeah, happy to reach out to Michelle and certainly we will be releasing that list to our platinum sponsors in advance of the show. But yes, absolutely. We'll reach out to Michelle.
Great. All right. Thank you, Michelle, for your follow-up question. Randy asks, can you repeat the URL? Yes, go-rspa.org/retailnow, all one word. I probably should have said that slower the first time I said it. Actually have a note on my board to tell me, don't talk so fast, but I tend to break that a lot. People are probably saying, put that note in a place so you can see it. Go-rspa.org/retailnow. Next question is from Sarah. When will we receive a list of available rentals from the hotel for our booth?
Yes. Sarah, I'll definitely reach out to you. And so in the exhibitor kit, we have the link to GES and that's our ordering site where you can order the components for your booth and we are happy to help with that.
Got it. Thank you. And you know what? I'm writing down Sarah's last name here because I've been deleting the questions to keep them organized and I hope that they show up when we download it afterwards. I'm like, oh my gosh. And the reason that could get confusing is the next question is from another Sarah and it's what is the cost to exhibit this year? Thanks, everybody, for these questions. We'll stay here and answer them all the way through. Ashley, can you run down the exhibition costs?
Yeah, absolutely. So the cost for a 10 by 10 space that includes two exhibitor passes for members, it's $4,450 or $4,500. For a 10 by 20, that includes four passes, the cost to exhibit is $8,100. And then for a 20 by 20, that includes eight passes, that cost would be $15,400. Certainly we can help accommodate larger booth sizes and work with you on that with the pricing and the passes as well.
Great. And Sarah, if you're interested, again, reach out to Ashley at membership@gorspa.org. She'd be happy to help you out. And anybody who's listening who's like, I've never exhibited before, should I? I'm not sure. You know, Ashley, you and I had a call yesterday with a potential vendor, potential exhibitor, and we gave the price of what membership is and what the booth is. They're like, oh, that's not bad at all, right? Because you go to some of these other shows that are broader, you know, and aren't as niche focused as we are. You pay a ton. And so this is a really great value, we think. You can spend, you know, like Ashley just said, on the booth, under five grand. You also get your passes in there. You pay for that, your hotel and your airfare, you're only paying, plus your booth, if you do a light enough booth, you can spend, you know, only $7,000 maybe and really dive deep into the association, really find out the best practices in terms of what's going to work for you in this market. So Sarah, I hope you're able to jump in and become another one of our exhibitors. Justin asks, will RSPA implement a no handshake policy?
So we are not implementing a specific policy. We would certainly leave that up to the individuals of what their comfort level is. Certainly with COVID, we want to maintain social distancing. So I'm confident that handshakes go along with that, but we continue to monitor those guidelines.
Great. Thank you. Next question is, will there be alcohol on the show floor like before? How is it taking 58 minutes for us to get this question? Ashley, what's your take on alcohol on the show floor?
So as it stands currently, we will not have alcohol on the show floor. And the reason for that, as we start to consider things and we look at the guidelines set forth by the county, where the hotel is located, you know, as we start to drink and have a good time, then the masks start to come down. And when we want to have that many people in one space or between four walls, we have to make sure that we follow those guidelines so that we can get as many people there as possible. So we don't want to reduce those numbers. The short answer is no, we will not have alcohol on the show floor.
Got it. Yeah, it reduces it significantly. Oh, go ahead, Kathy.
Yeah. And this is Kathy. I just wanted to jump in. Under the current restrictions, the county is not allowing alcohol, food or beverage to be served at all in exhibit halls. It's not an option for us right now.
Great. Thank you, Kathy. Yeah, very helpful. All right. We're coming up against a time, but we have a few more questions and we'll continue to go through it. What's the deadline for exhibitors to confirm their attendance? We already have our booth, however, company has yet to approve travel. Can you talk about confirming attendance, Ashley?
Yeah, absolutely. These are one-off situations that we would want to connect with you on. All of the booth deadlines have passed, but happy to have a conversation around that.
Got it. Thank you. All right. David, who asked an earlier question, he said that covers it. Thanks so much. Another question. Can you rent suites at the hotel for after-show hour meetings? Joe, thank you for that question.
Yes, if it's outside of our normal meeting time, we can certainly help with that. Yes.
Correct. Yeah, have a suite, but just make sure you're not having meetings there during show floor hours. Thank you, Joe. Another question from now. Will attendees need to sign a waiver to attend the show? Do you know that answer, Ashley?
I do not believe so, but Kathy, is there anything that you would like to add in the way of a waiver?
I don't believe we have an actual like waiver that people will sign. That is not something that is included in our registration.
Thank you, Kathy. All right. Just a couple more here. One is a comment from Michelle. She says, awesome. Thank you. Great. Glad we were able to answer the question. These next two questions are almost identical from Laura and Vicky. Will there be temperature checks before entering the exhibit hall or sessions?
We are looking at some creative ways to showcase member technology. Kathy, I'll defer to you on the temperature checks, but I don't believe that's going to be included as it stands today.
We currently do not have plans in place. However, as you mentioned, as Ashley mentioned, there are some members who have expressed an interest in displaying some technology. So that's a possibility, but at this point, we don't have any plans for that.
And Ashley, if I could just make one follow-up comment. We're 94 days away and we're going to get more informed each day and we will leverage and benefit from the information in the here and now and make the right decision. And we're always interested in our members and attendee input as well along the way. But right now, that's where we stand. But 94 days away, we've got the benefit of getting a little bit smarter and a little bit more informed every day. So we will, we will always take the approach that if it makes sense to do more, we'll do more when it comes to health and safety. But right now, what Ashley and Kathy shared with you is our current state, 94 days out.
Great. Thank you, John. And that appears to be all the questions that we have, though I did just get one note that it says, this is from another staff member. Registrations are rolling in. We have seen a significant uptick in the past 30 minutes. So again, big thank you to everybody who attended today, who's registering today. And again, just to remind, if you register between now and May 12th, and again, be sure to tell this to all your friends, we're going to be raising funds for the Nashville Rescue Mission. So again, for every 100 people who register between now and May 12th, RSP is going to donate $1,000 to the Nashville Rescue Mission. So thanks, everybody who's taken part in that right now. And if you have any questions at all, again, first you can search go-rspa.org/retailnow. We've built up a very robust website with a lot of information that we continue to update with the agenda and the safety spotlights. And the RSPA team is here to help you anytime you want it. You can reach out to any of the individuals that you're able to find us in our email addresses and phone numbers on the RSPA website. Or the easiest thing is just shoot a note to membership@gorspa.org. Hey, John Kirk, any final words and let you close it out here today?
Thank you, Jim, and thanks to everybody that attended. I just want to share one brief story for you because, or with you, because I think it's a great example and it aligns with what the RSPA and what Retail Now and what our community is all about. You know, many of you know that I grew up in Buffalo and I've got a tremendous amount of respect for a Hall of Fame coach named Marv Levy. And recently, Coach Levy was inducted or named, I should say, to the Canadian Football Hall of Fame as well. And I heard him tell a story about when he was a younger coach as an assistant at the University of New Mexico, he had saved up his money to attend a coaches clinic. And the reason he wanted to go to the coaches clinic is legendary coach Bear Bryant from Alabama was going to close the program with a message on Sunday. So Coach Levy didn't want to miss that. And he went to the event and as luck would have it, there was bad weather and plane issues and airfare, air travel issues for Coach Bryant and Coach Bryant couldn't make it as scheduled. So he made an offer saying, look, if the coaches want to stay over, I can get there Monday, but I can't get there Sunday because it's completely out of my control as planned. Well, there were about 150 coaches that attended the coaches clinic and most of them, you know, had to go away because when you think about it, you got an extra hotel night, you have commitments, you just can't stay another day. Well, Coach Levy decided to stay. And interestingly enough, there were three other coaches that also decided to stay. And those coaches' names were Bill Walsh, future Hall of Famer at the time, Dick Vermeil, future Hall of Famer at the time, Bobby Ross, one of the great NFL coaches and who took his team to the Super Bowl in San Diego and also won a national championship at Georgia Tech, and of course, Coach Levy, who is a National Football League Hall of Famer, Pro Football League Hall of Famer, and now a Canadian Football Hall of Famer. And I just think it's a great example of just having the hunger and the thirst for knowledge, connections, insight, learning, and finding a way to get it done. That's what this community is about. And this is our time to lead the way in an environment that is less than ideal, but we're going to find a way to beat it. And I always say, you can't win a fight if you're not willing to fight. And this association and this community, or community of fighters, and we're going to get it done. And I'll just close with a statement I made early on in the presentation today from our team. We are just where we want to be and we're going to be where we want to be 94 days from now. And I appreciate everything you've done for this association. Appreciate you staying with us and we have the best days ahead. Thank you very much. Thanks to our team and thanks to everybody that's attended. Have a great day and stay safe.